All right, the July 15, 2024 City of Andalia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, you've had an opportunity to review the council's special meeting minutes of June 3, along with the council's special meeting minutes of June 5, June 11, and the study session meeting minutes of June 17, along with the council meeting minutes of June 17. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. And next item is under Communications Petitions and Awards, where we have a proclamation to present to Shellis Heineman. If you could join me at the podium. Whereas the City of Andalia seeks to recognize those citizens who through their life's work have brought credit to our city, whereas Shellis Heineman spent his formative years in Andalia graduating from Andalia Butler High School, whereas Shellis Heineman attended the University of Eastern Illinois on a soccer scholarship graduating in 1973, and whereas Shellis Heineman began his coaching career while a graduate student at Murray State University, and whereas Shellis Heineman has coached men's soccer at Eastern Illinois University for seven seasons, at Southern Methodist University for 24 seasons, and FC Dallas of the Major League Soccer for five seasons, and men's soccer team at Grand Canyon University for four years. Whereas a hallmark of each of his teams has been a well-coached, disciplined, and mentally strong team that played hard till the final whistle. And whereas Shellis Heineman has for the past two years returned to his roots donating his time for the instruction of boys and girls in the Andalia throughout his soccer camps, his unselfishly instilling in them the next generation of soccer players, all the same qualities that made him a success on the field and in life. Whereas, thanks to Shellis Heineman generosity, the proceeds from the soccer camp are donated to the Andalia Recreation Fund, which provides scholarships to the local youth participants in the Andalia Rec Center leagues. Now therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Andalia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, July 16, 2024, as Shellis Heineman Day in the City of Andalia. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, council. This is really a special day for me. When I came to the United States, we lived in Andalia. It wasn't easy, but I made some fantastic friends, and some of my classmates and my best friends are here tonight. And I called Steve Clark a couple of years ago and said, you know what I do is I coach. That's what I did my whole life. And I would like to come to Andalia and do a soccer camp for the kids, but I will cover all my expenses, and all proceeds would go to the Recreation Department. Well, Steve said, yeah, definitely, we'd like to do that. So this year, we talked again, and I said, I would like to do it again under the same conditions. So here we are today, and getting this recognition is truly, truly important in my life. I tell my players the three Ps in life is place, which Andalia is my place. This is my home. In fact, if you got on my computer and you put in Andalia, you got my password. All right. Purpose, what is the purpose? My purpose is I want to make people better, not only on the field, but as human beings. I can't tell you the number of people that contact me that have played for me since 1981 that I still connected to. And of course, the third thing is passion, and I have a great passion in what I do in my life. I am fortunate with the love of Jesus Christ, and I believe in good things happen to good people, but I never, ever expected something like this. And Steve Clark and Jeff Crowell, both recreation people who really encouraged this to happen, I really want to thank all of you for this great honor and award. I wish my wife would have been able to come here, but my daughter's getting married, so she wanted to do some plans, but she definitely wants to know how it went. So thank you very much.
All right, now, next we have the introduction and oath of office for Matthew Green, firefighter, paramedic, inspector. And we'll also do the introduction and oath of office for Dustin Myers, police officer. Mr. Cron.
Matt, you want to stand up? Stay right there for now. So this is Matt Green, and Matt started with the Division of Fire as a part-time employee back in July of 2023, and then he recently began his full-time career with the Division of Fire on June 20 of this year. Matt is a graduate of Wayne High School in Huber Heights and MVCTC, where he enrolled in the fire EMS program. Matt continued his education after graduating. In this past spring, he obtained his paramedic certification. Matt was recently awarded a Andalia Victory V, along with his crew, for an outstanding care on a response they found to be quite difficult and stressful last fall. Matt delivers top-tier service and will continue to be an asset as he moves to his full-time role with the Division of Fire. And Matt currently lives in the City of Dayton. Okay, you can sit down for a minute. We'll do this one time down. Next is Dustin Myers. We welcomed Dustin to the Division of Police on June 24 of this year, when he began his initial orientation and field training. Dustin graduated from the Green County Criminal Justice Training Academy with his Ohio Basic Peace Officer Certification in 2022. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice from Heidelberg in 2016. Dustin is also a Bethel High School graduate and is a member of the Ohio Army National Guard, and was deployed in Iraq for a period of time in late '22 and '23. Dustin currently lives in Beaver Creek. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Matthew Green, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Ohio, that I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Andalia, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Firefighter, Paramedic Inspector within the Division of Fire. Congratulations. Thank you. I, Dustin Myers, solemnly swear to the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the state of Ohio, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Office of Police within the Division of Police. Congratulations.
We have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens.
Welcome.
All right, and congratulations to both of you, and welcome to Andalia. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Is this thing on? Okay, yeah, it's on, okay. Barbara Spurgeon, 777 North Edge Drive. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for everything that you do for our city, and thank you for hearing my comments
And at this time, if you do not want to stay for the entire meeting, this would be
this evening.
the time to get on with your evening.
I'm feeling somewhat perplexed, scratching my head and wondering about the recent events,
Thank you.
You're welcome.
you know, which took place last month with the departure of our city manager, Mr. Went.
Appreciate everything you've done for our community.
With any organization such as the offices of a city or a large company, there is always going to be conflict. Sometimes it gets personal, and one of the key elements of a well-run company or organization is conflict resolution. I know Mr. Went stepped on some toes along the way, but I truly believe on the other side of it, that he wasn't doing a good job for our city. It is really easy to get in a rut and continue with the attitude of, we've always done it that way. Mr. Went was doing things differently. So now here we are in a quandary with no city manager, and it will take a long time and more expenses to find an adequate replacement, along with a transition time. So I guess we will now be on autopilot for a while. I know you all met in executive session back in June at the special meeting that was called. I just don't understand why something couldn't have been worked out, such as a performance improvement plan, so that he could have stayed, you know? You could have set a plan to improve on the trouble spots and then have regular follow-ups. I retired from a Fortune 500 company, and that was always what our management did. They wanted to work with the employee to achieve performance improvement, so if that all possible, we could retain the employee. The last boss I had even told me that you learn from everything you do, and I really believe that. I wish things could have been handled differently with this situation for the greater good of our city. And the greater good, isn't that why you all ran for office? To quote Councilmember Mr. Folic, something he said at last month's meeting, elections have consequences. Thank you for your attention and your time this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment?
Sorry, this is my first council meeting, so I didn't know I was supposed to dress like super nice, so I apologize to all of you. My name is Alyssa Hilderhoff, and I live at 841 Continental Court here in town, and a lot of people say that it's a bad street. It's really not. It's cleaned up a whole lot, but I have a few concerns that I see every week on a weekly basis. And why I was running late and I thought I missed the meeting or whatever was because it literally reminded me, because the lady who lives next door in this building, every week, she has the ambulance, police, and a big fire truck come to our street because she doesn't take care of herself. Every day, I see this woman outside smoking cigarettes, talking to her neighbors, telling them how she is sick with this, this is her health problems, you know, but she is abusing our government facilities that could be used on somebody else. But what I'm saying is this morning, she literally got into a hospital van that took her to her doctor's appointment. And like I said, right before I came here at 5:30, we had the police, the fire truck, and the ambulance show up at our house to take her back to the hospital, which then they release her in three hours and send her back. I'm wondering if there's something or some kind of program or something that we could do to help these elderly people that, you know, like she might have, she does have a little bit of problems mentally and stuff, and I get it, but it's abusing when you have to have a police officer, a fire truck. That could be going to an actual emergency, somebody's house is on fire, there's a wreck on 75, you know, that happens every day through here because people don't know how to drive. But it's just concerning to me that these people are elderly a little bit, but they're not taking care of themselves, because she's a diabetic, so she's on an insulin pump. But I mean, this poor lady sits outside all day long and smokes cigarettes. Her legs are so purple that I'm afraid one of these days, she's not even going to be able to walk, because they're going to have to amputate her. But what can we do to help these people, like that's in our community? And I don't just see it with her, I see it with a few of the elderly people that live on my street, and it's just really sad to me. That's one issue. And then the second issue that I had was, I seen on the news last month that you guys put a 300-day memorandum or whatever on the marijuana dispensaries for here in our city, and I made a comment about it on All Things Andalia, and I got a big response from the community of people. I am a cancer survivor, I'm very happy for that, and I have to smoke marijuana, because the pills that they tried to give me make me a zombie that I can't even get off my couch. So I smoke marijuana responsibly, like a lot of people do, so that my deteriorating back that I have, I can function and be a civilized person in our community and help out. I think that's something that we should put to the people for a vote, to see what the town says about putting a dispensary in here to help a lot of us people that depend on that, just to be calm, collective, and not in pain all day. Those were my two issues, and I appreciate you for listening. Thank you.
Where do you go, excuse me, where do you go now to get it?
I have to drive two and a half hours up to Michigan, right across the border, which I can't sit for a real long period of time. I can't stand for a real long period of time because I have degenerative disc disease down my back. Like, they don't want to do surgery, because then I'd constantly be in there having surgeries all the time to fix, because my bones are going away. So I have to uncomfortably, literally, drive two and a half hours to go get my marijuana.
How many people in town do you know that are in this similar situation?
By looking at my Facebook post, a lot. I think I had maybe 57 comments just on that one, on that one post that day, but when we post stuff about it and others, then other people is replying to it and everything else. But I mean, it's something that, like, a lot of people look at it as a bad thing. I had a brain injury, so I have been an average smoker for 30 years. I've never had a speeding ticket. I've never been in a crash, because I'm responsible. I don't smoke to where I'm obliviated and I don't know what's going on. I take a couple hits to where I know that my body is numb, a little bit to where I can move and feel comfortable. I've worked my entire life working, I used to seal driveways. That was my job. I sealed parking lots and driveways. And then when I got cancer, I could no longer do it, because I couldn't climb the ladder to get up on the truck to do all the main stuff that I had to do. Like, there are responsible adults out there that have been using it for a long period of time, you know? For, God put it on this earth as a medicine, and people look at it like it's heroin or meth, and it is nothing like it. Kids abuse it with other things. They're mixing it with alcohol, and that's what makes it bad. And it's given to people like us that use it for a medical purpose, you know, it gives it a bad name when it's really not. It doesn't, it doesn't make me want to try cocaine, it doesn't make me want to try meth. The only thing that it makes me do is go to the refrigerator to get something to eat. That's why I'm actually a little obese, because I'm not working, I'm not, you know, running around, because I can't work, so I can't do my physical activities that I do, and it's caused me to have to gain weight, because that's what it does. It just makes you want to eat. So, is there any other questions? I'm sorry.
Ma'am, just to your first point about your neighbor, I would recommend, and Mr. Clark can give you the phone number, because I can't give it to you off the top of my head, but if you or your neighbor would contact Tony at the Senior Citizen Center, there's a whole slew of senior resources that she could probably put you or your neighbor in contact with to help provide that.
She doesn't want the help. That's the sad thing.
Well, I mean, it'd be good, even if you want to try calling Tony just to give her an access point, and Mr. Clark can give you the phone number to the senior center for Tony.
I just, on that point, I just think it's just like really wasting a lot of taxpayer dollars when, like, she could, all she would have to do is call one of the hospital transport vans, they would come and get her and take her there. Instead, she's wasting, you know, things that could actually be used for something that's an emergency, is how I'm looking at it, because that's taking time from a police officer, a firefight, a whole truck and the ambulance. And those could be used somewhere else when they really need it, on something that's not, that doesn't, you know, that somebody's not wanting to help themselves. And it's hard for us, and I know it's a line, because we can't force somebody to do something. I get that, but there has to be a point where you have to say enough is enough of wasting resources that are very important, you know, to our community, that could be used for something else at that time that could be happening.
The senior center also has available what they call VanTran, which is very inexpensive, and it transports people to where they need to go.
Right. See, and that's what I'm saying, because she has the, she has government insurance, because she'll tell you her life story if you sit out there and talk to her. So, you know, not only is she wasting our dollars of our emergency system, she's wasting the Ohio tax dollars that's paying for her Medicare and Medicaid, you know, because they charge for that ride every time, you know? So that was what I was looking at, and I don't know if we can make something to help or figure out a way that we could have a program to where, you know, you have these frequent callers that are always, you know, calling, can somebody just go by and check on them, you know, to say, hey, let's see, let's see what we can do. Sorry, I saw it on an episode of Chicago Fire, so that's where I got it from, because they have a, they have a paramedic system that does that for the frequent callers that are always calling, you know, and I didn't know if that was something that we could look into, you know? So, thank you very much.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? All right, we'll move on to the city manager's report, where we have an information item and an action item. Mr. Cron.
Yes, Your Honor, one thing is just a reminder of our summer schedule for council meetings, where I guess we established the summer schedule. The next meeting would be scheduled for August 19 at 7:00 PM, but I know we've talked earlier this evening about going ahead and having a meeting on August 5 for the zoning item that would be coming from Planning Commission.
And that would be a special meeting, so it wouldn't be a regular one?
A special meeting, and I guess we'll establish a time for that.
All right, will you just confirm that everybody can be here? Anybody could be gone? Okay.
There would probably not be a study session that evening, because...
It can be, it doesn't have to be at 7, it can be at a different time.
Do it at 6.
I'm trying to help you out there.
Right, so would you want to have the meeting on August 5 at 6:00 PM? Does that work for everyone? Okay. Okay, the next item is, at the last council study session, we introduced Mr. Ed Shoemaker, who has volunteered to be on the Andalia Bicycle Committee, and Marcus O'Brien, who applied and volunteered to be on the Housing Code Board of Appeals, and we just need to approve both of those members to those boards tonight.
Have a motion?
I move.
A motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve them to their respective appointments. Call the roll? Or vote by acclamation?
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, the motion passes 7-0. Now, we have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 24-R-45. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution awarding the bid for the Tianda Moss View and Ranch View Drive Water Main Replacement and Resurfacing Project, requested by Development and Engineering Services to M&amp;T Excavating at the lowest and best bid of $1,685,751.
Thank you. Mr. Cron.
Yes, Your Honor, bids were opened on Tuesday, July 9, and nine sets of specifications were issued for the project, and seven contractors submitted bids for the project. Bids range from $1,685,751 to $2,112,101. Our final estimate for the project was $1,842,650. We're recommending awarding the bid to M&amp;T Excavating at the lowest and best bid of their price of $1,685,751. We are also asking that we allow the contingency amount up to the $1,764,000 that we have appropriated for the project for unknown potential costs within the project, and that is approximately about 5% of the original bid.
Thank you. Have a motion?
You're our move that we approve Resolution 24-R-45 as presented by Mr. Cron.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Resolution 24-R-45 as presented. Are there any comments from council?
Just a quick recognition to staff for, again, obtaining a 50% outside funding through OPWC for this project, so that helps spread our local dollar, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 24-R-46.
A resolution declaring the real estate owned by the city and located at 31 North Perry Street surplus property and authorizing the donation of such property to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Dayton.
Thank you. Mr. Cron.
Yes, this property at 31 North Perry Street was acquired by the City of Andalia back in February of 2010, and at that time, we demolished an existing structure as part of blight abatement in that neighborhood. Ever since then, the lot has been, has sat vacant, and the city's just paid to maintain and mow the lot. Habitat for Humanity of Greater Dayton has expressed an interest in this property for another house build, similar to the one we did on Foley Drive a couple of years ago. We're recommending we donate this property to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Dayton as an act of partnering for a home build, and I know they've had discussions with our zoning department also about the availability or that the lot will fit in the neighborhood, and they would be able to build a home on there to meet all the zoning requirements. And we do have representative here from Habitat tonight, Mr. Norm Miozi in the audience.
All right, have a motion?
OPWC for this project, so that helps spread our local dollars. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 24-R-46.
A resolution declaring the real estate owned by the city and located at 31 North Perry Street surplus property and authorizing the donation of such property to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Dayton.
Thank you. Mr. Cron?
Yes. This property at 31 North Perry Street was acquired by the City of Vandelia back in February of 2010, and at that time, we demolished an existing structure as part of blight abatement in that neighborhood. Ever since then, the lot has been, has sat vacant, and the city's just paid to maintain and mow the lot. Habitat for Humanity of Greater Dayton has expressed an interest in this property for another house build similar to the one we did on Foley Drive a couple of years ago. We're recommending we donate this property to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Dayton as an act of partnering for a home build. And I know they've had discussions with our zoning department also about the availability or the, that the lot will fit in the neighborhood, and they would be able to build a home on there to meet all the zoning requirements. And we do have representative here from Habitat tonight, Mr. Norm Miozy in the audience.
All right. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 24-R-46 as presented.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Vice Mayor Blakesley to approve Resolution 24-R-46 as presented. Are there any comments from council?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate what Habitat for Humanity does here in our area. We just finished up a house in the flat behind Frickers here last year. I know our group for bar off, people from our office worked on that, and it really came together well, and we've done that for probably the last four years. So appreciate everything you do. Thank you. Call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 24-R-47.
A resolution establishing a 911 service system fund.
Mr. Cron?
Yes. The City of Vandelia has received notifications of several plan updates to the countywide 911 system and will now receive a portion of the 911 fees collected by the state. The funds received must be spent in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 128.57. Therefore, it is necessary to establish a separate accounting fund for the receipt and dispersal of these monies.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I'm, did we approve Resolution 24-R-47 as presented?
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Resolution 24-R-47 as presented. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll?
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have no ordinances in the first reading. We do have an ordinance in the second reading, that being Ordinance 24-14.
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, and repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
Thank you. Mr. Cron?
Yes, Your Honor. This ordinance approves the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances in resolutions that have been passed by council since the last update of the codified ordinances. This update will codify all pertinent legislation passed by council during 2023, as well as incorporating amendments to the Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, we'll open a public hearing on this one. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 24-14 in the second reading.
Second.
A motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Ordinance 24-14 in its second reading. Are there any questions? Call the roll?
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have an emergency ordinance, that being Ordinance 24-15.
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the Finance Director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cron?
Yes, this ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater fees, trash collection, delinquent water and sewer accounts, weed cutting, and property maintenance.
All right, thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, not so fast.
Yeah. Behind our building, I'm sorry, Agora is my property management, and since they have taken over, our back wall of the fence that goes all the way down there is overgrown, raccoon-infested, because they don't clean that. A long time ago, I worked for McGee when he ran that whole street, and we would have to go back there because the city would make us have to clean that whole line up along that, that fence. And now, they're not doing that. If, if we're doing that, can we get that back on there to where they have to come and take care of the yard in the back? Because they barely even weed eat out front. They come and they mow.
Thank you.
So that, that is at your building that you live in?
Um, it's 841, it's the 841 building. If I pull it up on the map, I could show you the four buildings, but if you go down each side, it's like that all the way on both sides. So it's the two different property owners on that that aren't taking care of it. But if you go down there, like, to put your dumpster up, you have to go through the weeds and the trees and the squirrels, the birds, and the raccoons. You know, it's easier for them to climb up and get in our trash can, so when you go to lift up the dumpster, they're flying out at you. So if we could look into cleaning the back of that part, the property line on both sides of those, that would be awesome.
All right. We'll have our property maintenance inspector look at it.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right, we're going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve Ordinance 24-15 as an emergency.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Ordinance 24-15 as an emergency. Are there any other comments or questions from council? Call the roll?
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. That brings us to reports from boards and commissions. We've got the civil service meeting minutes of April 10. We have the Planning Commission meeting minutes of May 14. Are there any comments on those? And that brings us to the June 2024 bill listing in the amount of $3,554,162.22. We also have the month expenses over $25,000 and the month's purchasing card detail in the amount of $20,347.10. And at last, council comments. We will begin with our law director, Mr. McDonald.
Nothing, no, thank you.
All right. Mr. Cron?
The only thing is, I'm happy to announce that we had our new human resources manager start today, and we will have her here at our next meeting to introduce her to you.
All right. Talked to her on the phone today. All right. Councilmember Dugan?
I'd like to welcome Matt to the fire department and Dustin to the police department.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
I have none, Your Honor.
Councilmember Folic?
Just one item, and that is, over the past several weeks, there has been a lot going on in Vandelia for our residents in the community. And I just want to recognize staff across the organization, all the departments, for their collective efforts between air show, corporate challenge, neighbor cleanup day, the police open house, all-inclusive recreation day, the food rally at the crossroads, Star Spangled Celebration, the Optimist July 4 Freedom Tour, and there's probably about 10 other items that I did not include. But staff, just, I mean, that time period from the beginning of June until, you know, now is just filled with activities and special events, and thank you to all of the staff for all of your efforts in providing those services and events to our residents. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Farce?
I echo Corey's sentiment. Our staff does a great job, and they put a lot of effort and work into supplying services to our city. We've had a lot of discussion or a lot of thought, I think, over the last couple of months regarding our budget and finances, and I would like to ask for, and I'll provide this list to you when I get through, all the supplementals that have been incurred to date, and all the supplementals that we anticipate for 2024. I'd like to see a report on all personnel changes to date, beginning January of '24 to date, in hiring, promotions, terminations, positions vacated, and retirements. A report on pay increases and bonuses. And I'd like to see what the expected payout of the Employee Retirement Reserve Fund, number 255, is for 2024. So I'll hand this to you. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Um, yeah, so I guess my thoughts were kind of still with, with Corey and Candace. I'd actually mentioned the police open house, airshow parade, backyard bash food rally, and then they kind of covered the rest. I thought staff did a great job and that, you know, the community had a lot of great times. And the rec center has a lot of free or low-cost events coming up. I know I'm going to get it wrong, but it's something with foam coming up on Fri, is it this Friday? Friday from like 11 to 2, is that right?
It's Splashtacular.
Splashtacular, yeah. And so that looks like a great time. I did want to welcome the new staff that has came. And then something else that has came to light and been a big talk online is, again and still, just a lot of activity in the neighborhoods. One is the solicitors. We brought this up and found that there is a registered solicitor's list that you can get from staff, and those people that are on that list have passed a background check and gotten a license. So if you get that list, they have to provide that license and have that on display. If they're not on that list and don't have that license, that means that they have not registered with the city, and at that point, then you should contact either DES or the police. You also should have, if you do not wish to be contacted, you can always put that solicitor sign out. And we are looking into other ways I had contacted our city manager about, interim city manager, about possibly creating a no-contact list for those that have registered. The other thing is, is I'm still seeing the posts about the cars that have been broken into, or their doors have been opened, and people are posting pictures and videos online. And I would still encourage you, no matter what people are saying about it being their fault, I would still please say, just contact the police every time, because they can't catch them if they don't know about them. And the pictures and the videos are helpful for them, and knowing the addresses so that they can patrol better. Just posting it online is not helpful for them to be able to do that. And I know that we've said this in the last meeting as well, but just please, just continue to contact them. And again, we are hearing, you know, the strains on the community with the finances as far as the water, the sewer, the amenity costs, the trash rates, the general cost of living, and that is on our minds as we are going into this next budget year, and hearing all of those things. So that's all my comments. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Well, everything's pretty much been said, but the only thing I will add and echo to everything is that Mr. Messenger and his staff rock the programming. I was at the backyard bash, and it was a little warm, but he was there having a good time, and so were the other families, and just a great way to celebrate the city and bring some of our amenities to, to the citizens, and just really appreciate what all of our staff does all the time. That's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you. I have no other comments, so this meeting is adjourned.